Oh, somebody's beeping. I'm calling the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is a 15 minutes open forum. We have two people who've said they would like to speak. Daniel Klein is first. Mr. Klein, do you want to go ahead and speak? And then you need to give us your name and address and fill that in when you're done speaking.
Okay. Good afternoon or good evening. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Kathy Klein. She attended the Bandshell Task Force last Saturday. And she took some notes and she had some comments, but unfortunately, she was unable to attend tonight's council meeting. And she asked me to read this statement that she prepared. So I will. "I attended a meeting of the Bandshell Task Force on Saturday, June 14th. While I believed them to be well-intentioned, I was dismayed to learn that they were unaware of several key factors regarding the music facility being built at Lyndale Gardens in the Lyndale Gardens development itself. As a result, they conveyed bad information to the city council, which was relied upon in the three-to-two vote in favor of building a bandshell in Vets Park. First, the Lyndale Gardens space is not a solely private venture. The city owns property with Cornerstone there. Second, private donations can be made and would be tax-deductible via the Cornerstone Foundation. Third, parking is more than adequate and arrangements are being made for pedal cab and other transportation from additional parking lots in the area. More importantly, the area is more pedestrian and bike-friendly than Vets Park. For these reasons alone, the city council should reconsider its approval of a bandshell in Veterans Park and vote instead to support the large performance stage already being built at Lyndale Gardens. I also learned at the Bandshell Task Force meeting that they have been unsuccessful in their fundraising goal. But rather than admitting defeat, they are now soliciting recent high school graduates and church congregation. Our high school graduates face high college debt and few job prospects. Charitable donations are at record lows and communities and families are struggling to make up the shortfall. Does the city really need or want to pressure these groups? I would suggest quite simply to the city council that the reason private funds cannot be raised is because the public does not want a bandshell in Vets Park. This is not a question of whether we should have a bandshell. We will have one at Lyndale Gardens. The question is whether we need two and whether the public should be forced to pay for this luxury. The only reasonable answer is no. Thank you for your attention."
Okay. And if you would fill in your name and address there, I'd appreciate it. Second speaker is Susan Myers.
I'm Dr. Susan Myers, 6226 Fourth Avenue South in Richfield. It has been two years since the Community Services Commission suggested having a bandshell in Veterans Park. There has been opposition from the beginning, and it has been growing. I remember attending a council meeting in spring of 2013, and I got the impression the council members really were listening. In the summer of 2013, there were the concerts on the go, looking at various sites. And Lyndale Gardens was the clear winner, with 100 people attending one concert, 75 another. At a concert that I attended at Vets Park, there were about 25 people, a third of whom had come to sign my petition opposing a bandshell. If we look at the -- this isn't working. When the decision was made on February 11th, there was a request for feedback from the council, and I think that feedback has been coming in. When I go door knocking, fully 90% of the people I encounter sign a petition in opposition to a bandshell. With about 5% of people, there are language difficulties, and we're not able to converse. And then another 5% says they don't have strong feelings one way or the other. There definitely is growing opposition. I would hope that it would be seen that opposition would not be misread as oppositional or troublemaking. Rather, it's a sign of a healthy democracy. We're good citizens who want very much to feel that our elected officials are truly listening and being respectful of multiple viewpoints. On the other hand, passions sometimes do run high. And sometimes we can be frustrated at the way we've been treated when we seek public information, which is, after all, our right. At the last Bandshell Task Force meeting, there was inappropriate behavior, both on the part of Bandshell Task Force members and those opposed to it. And I am not going to defend inappropriate behavior. It was inappropriate. At the same time, I think it needs to be put in the context in which it occurred, which was a 15- to 20-minute delay when Bandshell Task Force members tried to hide information in response to a simple question. That is information that is our right to have, that we have every right to be requesting. And it is our right to disagree, even with the city council, and to get answers. And I just want to clarify that. Again, I'm not defending inappropriate behavior, but I do think that task forces, commissions, need to be acting appropriately as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would sign in, please. Is there anyone else? Okay. Then we will move forward to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of June 10th, 2014, and the regular city council meeting of June 10th, 2014. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's see. I'm -- okay, we have a presentation. And this is regarding the Richfield Fire Department, so I suspect we're going to have folks here tell us all about it. Thank you.
I have Kevin Joyce here from CenterPoint Energy. They have a program, a grant program, that they do throughout their service area, where they provide up to $2,500 grants for matching -- for projects in public safety. The fire department applied for the grant, and we are going to be using the funds -- we were fortunately awarded the funds. And we're going to be using the funds to purchase a Rad 57, which is a carbon monoxide detector in your blood. Basically, it's like a pulse oximeter, only it detects the level of carbon monoxide in your blood. We currently have one on the east side of town. Now, we're going to have one on the west side of town. So we'll be able to -- both of our frontline rigs on each side of town will have one of them. We're also going to be purchasing individual small carbon monoxide detectors that will go on our emergency medical bags, because we're finding that a number of people don't realize that they actually have CO, carbon monoxide, in their homes. And we're getting flu-like symptoms, calls, and we go out, and it turns out that they actually have -- they're suffering from carbon monoxide poisoning. But with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Joyce from CenterPoint, and he can talk a little bit about the program.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Joyce, area manager of CenterPoint Energy. And the Community Partnership Grant Program, the fire chief we were talking about, offers us an opportunity for CenterPoint to partner with the cities we serve. Since 2003, the program has exceeded 1.2 million in donations and helps to support the funding of 630 projects in communities throughout the company's service area. Through the grant program, we're able to help cities leverage local funds to purchase needed safety equipment or support safety projects that are important to your community. Tonight, I am pleased to present the City of Richfield with a Community Partnership Grant for $2,500 that will be used to purchase CO monitors and the Rad 57 monitor for the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate CenterPoint Energy's contribution. Thank you, Chief. All right. And I have been requested to make a slight agenda adjustment. And the city manager would like to talk to us at the point in time when we have council discussion items, and this is kind of an important one, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeBage.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sandahl, members of the city council. We've had some big events going on in Richfield in the past few days. Anyone around Richfield can realize by looking out their windows, the past few days, we've had a lot of rain, we've had a lot of water. And I want to have Public Works Director Mike Eastling just talk a little bit about what we had, what we did, and some of the things that we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It was a week ago last Saturday, we had that heavy windstorm with rain, and then a few days later, even more rain, and that caused some problems within the city. And I have some pictures that kind of highlight some of the things. And first of all, on 65th Street, we show us three boulevard trees right up that are knocked over. And what you can't see, even behind those, some other trees were knocked down by these trees that were knocked down. So there was some significant winds. There was, you know, eight, 10 trees. Some of the trees were just damaged. It looks like we may have to take them down completely, but here's an example of three of those. Here's another tree on Bloomington Avenue. This tree, you know, kind of barely hit a house there. I mean, but it did -- some of the branches did hit the one house. It's the boulevard tree. And here's a tree that's at near 67th and Fourth. And you can see, the tree is not upended, uprooted. It was just split, but it ended up hitting the house and taking out a fence and caused some damage there. But for the next week and a half, actually up till really, you know, today, we were starting to get back to normal again. We've had most of our crews going around trying to repair the damage that was done in combination of the windstorm branches, trees, whatnot, and taking care of the city facilities that were damaged and city trees. I'd like to -- maybe while I'm talking about those trees, of course, there was a lot of private tree then. And the city took care of the public trees, took care of the ones in the parks and on the boulevards. And if there were private trees, the private property owners were instructed to do that. There has been times in the -- actually, it's fairly far distant past now, it's been 10 years or more since the city's been involved, that there's been perhaps a heavy enough event where there's some federal aid involved in something like that. But some people thought that the city crews were going to take care of this. We received hundreds, hundreds of phone calls from people asking if the city was going to do that, and we informed them that no, that they needed to take care of their own trees. And so -- and as of today, you know, there was -- we went around, and there was still some folks that had some of these limbs out on the boulevard, thinking that the city was going to take care of it. And there was -- right now, we're down to, we counted 30, I think, if I remember right now. It's about 30 households that still had some of those limbs out there. And we don't know if they're just still waiting for somebody to come get them, but we're going to be informing them by letter that it is their responsibility in reminding them of those responsibilities. Unless you want to add something about that?
So if I understand you, Mr. Eastling, if it's a city boulevard tree that fell or dropped a limb, the city will take care of it?
That's correct.
But if it's a limb somebody pulled out of their backyard and put on the boulevard, that is not the city's responsibility?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then one question I have, is there a place they can go to find out if they wanted to dispose them themselves, where they can get rid of these trees? Do we have something on the website yet?
Yeah, we have it on the website, and we respond to phone calls. We have a list of vendors that will accept it.
So going on the website, how will I find it for those in the audience?
Well, if you went on the front page of the website, we've got a banner in there.
Thank you.
And another thing I wanted to highlight is, you may not have known, this is Mildred Drive, the picture that I'm showing right now. This is -- Mildred Drive is the street around Richfield Lake, kind of across from the post office, sort of. I mean, you can see, this street is underwater. You know, there's a foot of water at the gutter line or moor. And the water from Richfield Lake overflowed the banks and actually went into the street there. And I have to say that back in '87, I was here, and when that happened, we did not have an outlet to this lake. And so we had to go and run up a pipe across the street, across Lyndale Avenue, and pipe it actually all -- and pump it all the way over to Vets Park. And it took a long time to get that pumped down. With the gravity outfall that we have here, this now has a drain that drains to Wood Lake. Now, Wood Lake didn't used to have an outlet either, but now with the 77th Street project, we have a pipe that now drains Wood Lake down to a pump that's down on 494, and we're pumping that lake down. So both of those get pumped down as we do that pumping. So unlike over 20 years ago, when there was no outlet, we have these outlets in place. And you can see, when you get longstanding rains, these pipes and pumps can't keep up. But we did not get any water into any home, like what happened back in '87. None that I'm aware.
If I could just add for -- just to add to that, yeah, I was here in '87 also, and certainly it was a mess. We had a mess in '87. There was a lot of -- a lot of homes got flooded. We had water all over the place. I know we were running all over the state of Minnesota getting equipment. We didn't have enough equipment, the kind of piping we needed, the generators, the pumps, and everything. But I want people to know that, you know, the City of Richfield since that time, I think has done an excellent job of managing the storm sewer fund that we have. And with that fund, the monthly payment that people make for their storm sewer, we've pretty much cleaned up a lot of the problems. And, you know, the piping that we did from Richfield Lake to Wood Lake, and then ultimately down to the lift station down by 494, that drains all this out, you know, but for that fund, we wouldn't have that. And, you know, if -- I took a look today. I drove by to take a look at Mildred Drive and some of that area, and I was there on Friday. And I told somebody, you know, you could have kayaked on Mildred Drive on Friday, easily, Thursday, Friday. And I went there today, and you would have never known that it ever came out of its banks. And I think the paths were back above water again, pretty much, and the street was perfectly cleared, and the water was back in its banks. And, you know, again, that speaks to the storm sewer system that we have in Richfield.
Well, and Madam Mayor, we have the system brought up to the standard 100-year design, you know, that sort of thing. We can -- and actually, the rain we got, you know, in that period of time was pushing this 100-year design. So actually, the system actually worked fairly well. Pretty pleased with it. Now, if we'd have had seven, eight inches instead of three or four, you know, we'd have had some problems. But with the rain that we had, our system was able to minimize, if not eliminate, the private property damage.
You know, another thing that would be helpful, I think, folks that have sewer drainage thing in their -- on the boulevard, you know, it'd be nice if they could keep that clear.
Yeah. Yeah, Madam -- yes, absolutely. Yep, the drain out in the street, a lot of time, all it takes is a piece of cardboard floating in there, and it can follow the system.
I think, Mike, you probably have to recognize that we can't rest on our laurels. They're not using 100-year storms anymore. They're talking 500-year. That's the criteria that people are designing against now.
Yep. And in fact, well, there's a need to have a study session with the council with some of the new rainfall data that's available, and we need to talk to you about the changing rainfall situation.
But you've done a great job in taking care of that, and as fast as you did.
Just to add another anecdote, I do recall swimming in Lake Monroe in 1987.
Well, back in '87, there were over 100 homes with water on their first floor in Richfield. And so we had none this time, and that's really an improvement.
None this time. No. Quite frankly, that was a whopper storm back in '87, and that was 14 inches. So, I mean, even if we'd have done all these improvements, there had been a lot of damage. But still, we made some -- a lot of improvement since then. One other thing I just wanted to point out, that we had an unusual event at the water plant, not related to the storms, but I had some pictures, so I thought I'd throw them up here, that the main power feed to the power plant shorted out. I mean, it had -- sparks went flying this morning at about 7:00 in the morning. It knocked out the power feed, and it's going to -- it's out today. We're relying on our generator backup. And in fact, we went and got a -- rented a generator to be the backup for our backup, so because we can't -- we just can't go without power there. And so we're relying on that now. It's going to take several days, probably into next week, to redo the system. It's quite an electric rework job that has to be done in the back.
I'm just going to comment, a lot of neighbors I saw were helping other neighbors, and I really liked that in Richfield, where people had trees down. And we saw people going out, moving them off the street net before the city crews got out. I would also suggest, if you know a neighbor that has a large pile of brush in front of their yard and that, and you own a chainsaw, maybe you cut it up for them, they'll be able to put it in the recycling.
Or a trailer.
Yeah, or something smaller, because a lot of people don't own chainsaws and that, and that's all they really need to do is make the bigger branches smaller, so they can dispose them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We've got it covered. Okay. I'm going to back up, and I apologize, I forgot to move that we passed the resolution accepting the CenterPoint Energy grant. So I would hereby move that we authorize acceptance of the grant to the fire department from CenterPoint Energy and deposit funds in the general fund to be utilized by the fire department for the purchase of carbon monoxide detectors and a carbon monoxide oximeter.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Other council discussion items?
Well, I wanted to let folks know that Lake Wind Natural Food Co-op will have its grand opening coming up Saturday, June 28th, and Sunday, June 29th. And the 28th, I think, will be the -- that one at 9:00, I think it's when the ribbon cutting will be, Angie, right? Oh, okay. Okay. And that's located at 6420 Lyndale, and I think we can all be very proud to finally have a co-op and a co-op that, you know, that really, I think, people are going to come from miles around to shop there.
Okay.
Yep, if I may. Last week, the mayor and myself met with John Stark and the city manager in regards to a notice we'd received from the City of Edina in regards to changing their comprehensive plan and increasing the densities in some areas, some of which border on the Richfield border. So what we'd met with is to discuss a -- they'd invited a request from our staff to theirs, indicating what our feelings were. And I think that the consensus was, at least among the mayor and myself, that we take a pretty strong position in regards to lessening the density on our soft borders. And I just want to suggest that there were two separate letters that were sent, both back to the City of Edina and also to the Met Council. One from the city itself, and one by the mayor. And I guess a couple of things I want to say is, the mayor took a real strong stand on what she felt was inappropriate density that they were trying to impose on our soft borders. That's the reason it was sent to the Met Council, to see if they will visit that, because it's going to be a continuing problem, particularly with the increased density that everybody's trying to put, to kind of contain the growth and the sprawl. I think the density is fine. When it's on a soft border right across from residential homes, I think it's inappropriate, and you really need to be aware of your neighbors before you start putting those densities there. So the mayor's letter was quite strong. The city staff basically voiced the same objections. And I just want to congratulate Melissa Puelman, the city planner, was in the meeting with us and helped author the letters. And I thought she did a wonderful job on behalf of helping the mayor and also the city staff. I thought that she articulated every concern we had and did an excellent job of writing that letter. So I want to thank her for the help she gave us on that. Are we going to do hats off now, too?
Yeah.
The second thing is, I see Katie Robison is in here, and I think I'm being guilted into this one. I've been getting emails about volunteering. I bartended for the Fourth of July, or the street dance, last couple of years. Put me down for something, I keep forgetting to sign up. But I just wanted to pass it on, that you still need volunteers, and it's really fun. I've bartended the last couple of years, and I get the last shift, so everybody's kind of tired by then, and I don't have to work too hard. But I enjoy it, and I think everybody that's ever participated in it's enjoyed it. So Katie's here, I'm sure that it's not hard to find the webpage for the Fourth of July celebration, and so it's not too late to sign up and throw your hat in the ring and start participating also.
And with the permission of the council, maybe I'll invite Katie to come up and just tell us more about what people need to know about the Fourth of July. That's okay. I wasn't worried.
As many of you may know, the celebration is next week. We actually start on the second, and I don't think most residents know that we start on the second, and then have events on the second, third, and fourth. So on the second is Family Night. It's a family-friendly event. Bring your entire family out there, friends, neighbors. We have a picnic that's very budget-friendly, entertainment, a lot of local groups, sports teams get together and have free events for the kids. There'll be blow-up things to play on. Kind of, we're starting to maybe make that an event that replaces the carnival, so has some rides and then just a lot of events for kids and families. And then entertainment as well. And then the third is our car show, 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's extended this year by two hours. So as soon as the car show ends, the street dance begins. And that's what Pat said we needed volunteers for. Actually, today, and with Pat volunteering, I have filled up all the volunteer slots, thankfully. So I can still fit you in, but sometimes it gets a bit crowded. So if you're interested, though, for next year, volunteers get a free Fourth of July button, which is the $5 value, free entrance to the street dance, which is a $5 value, and a free drink ticket. So for two hours of volunteering, you basically get paid $15, so a pretty great deal. And then on the fourth is the parade, which begins at 1:00, the same route as it has been the past couple of years. And then our fireworks start at 10:00. And we actually now have -- will have food vendors on both sides of the park. So where the carnival used to be, we will have some food trucks. We're trying out some new things this year, so some food trucks with different foods, and then also the food vendors still on the south side of the park. So buttons are for sale for $5. They get you into the street dance for free. There's discounts for Dairy Queen, the Richfield Pool, and those are $5 at all the liquor stores right now. And then on this Saturday, we're selling them at the Credit Union from 9:00 until 12:30, and then at the farmer's market from 8:00 till noon. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You're a wealth of information. Thank you. Hats off. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up?
I think the city crew did a fantastic job in a storm. Police Department, I was busy, along with the fire department, and want to thank the citizens of Richfield for kind of holding themselves together. We kind of had a mini-disaster, and what I really noted was a lot of neighbors helping neighbors. And I just thought that was so cool. We were just talking about branding tonight for Richfield, and I said, how do you brand that, where neighbors that don't know neighbors go out and help neighbors? It's just something unique to Richfield. So, and that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item is approval of the council agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item is our consent calendar. Mr. DeBage.
Yes, the consent calendar, those in the audience, those at home, contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on those items will be necessary. We've got five or six items on tonight's consent calendar, starting off with item A, consideration of the approval of an annual request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the activity scheduled on July 4th, 2014, for the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435 at 6501 Portland Avenue. Item number B, number B, item B, is consideration of the approval of an annual request for a community celebration event license and a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license with a fee waiver for the Fourth of July Committee for the annual event scheduled at Veterans Park on July 1st through July 5th, 2014. Item C is consideration of approval of resolution authorizing the lawful gambling premises permit application for the Fred Babcock VFW Post 5555 to conduct lawful gambling at the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435 at 6501 Portland Avenue. Item D is consideration of the approval of resolution authorizing the execution of an amended joint cooperation agreement between the City of Richfield and Hennepin County for the participation in the urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program for the fiscal years 2015 through 2017. Item E is consideration of the approval of an amendment to the commercial lease with the Minnesota Department of Transportation and amendment to the license agreement with the Transmission Shop Incorporated for the parking lot at Cedar Avenue and Diagonal Boulevard. And finally, item F, which is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing on July 22nd, 2014 regarding the issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license with the optional 2:00 a.m. closing for Last Call Operating Company II Incorporated doing business as Champs Americana at 79066 West. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move the calendar.
I'll second that.
All right. This is moving of the consent calendar. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I think it's great to see our Legion and our 4-5s working together and helping each other out. That goes to show, again, what good community we're in. It's a, it's a, that goes to show again what good community we are, we're in.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else from city manager?
Only that there was a, a piece that the mayor had requested that, that we read and if you'd be happy, do that?
Didn't write it down and if I don't write it down, it doesn't happen.
There you go.
Thank you.
And my city manager report was actually given by Mike Eastling, so it took care of me.
All right. The city mayor, Gotel, was not able to be here tonight and she asked that this be read into the record. It says, "I wanted to take some time to restate the process of the open forum to the residents and general public. To participate in the open forum, you only need to show up at the meeting about 15 minutes early and fill out an open forum card." And these are just little cards with names and addresses on them and what the topic is. These cards are placed on a table just outside the council chambers and you just fill out the card, fill in the few lines and hand it to the city staff, which are on the left side of the dais on my right side over here. "The open forum time is on every council agenda at the beginning and end of the agenda. Comments are to be kept to three minutes. To ensure the three minutes, the mayor has a timer in front of her at all times. I want to make sure that, or she wants to make sure that everyone has the ability to get at least three minutes of speaking time. She allows speakers to finish up their last thoughts. They may run over a few seconds and she wants to be considerate to people. When the time is getting close to three minutes, at about 2 minutes and 45 seconds, she then asks the speaker to wrap up their comments. Sometimes this three minutes can go exceedingly fast, other times the three minutes for some seems like a lifetime. If you don't get all your comments heard in the three minutes, please leave written comments with the staff and they will pass them on all to the city council members and make sure we all have copies." And she wishes to assure everyone that we actually read them, and we do. "She also decided not to put up warning lights, buzzers, or have cutoff switches at the microphones in the chamber, in the new council chambers, and that was a council decision. Other chambers in other cities do have such devices. These rules can make speakers more nervous and discourage public comment. By and large, speakers are genuine, cordial, and respectful and we prefer to be the same way when indicating that the speaker's time is nearly up. We welcome your participation in the public comment part of the council agenda and thank you from Mayor Gotel."
I'll move claims and payrolls.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have no further business, so we stand adjourned.